Good evening, and welcome to the Norwood Board of Selectmen's meeting for the 17th of December 2019. As always, let us begin with a pledge to our flag and a moment of silent prayer and reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, please be seated. This evening we have two appointments before us. At 7:00 PM we have William Brooks, Chief of the Northern Police Department, giving his monthly update, and at 7:15 approximately we'll have Chief George Morris of the Norwood Fire Department giving his monthly update. So I'd like to start with Chief Brooks if we could. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, gentlemen, how are you?
Very good, sir.
So let me start with a case that was on social media and in the news last week. It was a scam committed on an 85-year-old woman who's a resident of Norwood, and I'll explain how it happened. She received a telephone call at her home from a man purporting to be an attorney. The attorney said that he was representing her grandson who is under arrest in another state. He told her that it was going to cost her $9,000 to get her grandson freed from jail. He told her to put together a package of cash, to go to the bank, get a package of cash, wrap it up, and to ship it. She told him that shipping it would be a difficulty for her, so he said that he would send somebody to the house, which in these scams is a little unusual. Somebody came to her home, she gave him the package, and off he went. The next day she got a call from the same man who said it would cost another $10,000 to get her grandson out of jail. Unfortunately, she prepared a second package, that was $10,000, that was also picked up by someone at her home, and that's when we found out about what was going on, when she was brought in by one of her family members. The detectives began to investigate it. These cases are difficult to work with, you know, these days of technology, you can spoof telephone numbers and all of that. So in any event, the detectives started to work on it, but the woman said, you know, they've said that they'd need a third payment, this one for $16,000. So the detectives put together a dummy package, placed the home under surveillance, they saw a car pull up, the car actually went by the house parked a few houses away, the passenger walked back, met with the woman, took the dummy package, and returned to the car. The detectives began to follow them, and this is kind of a literal moving target about when you follow somebody and when you pull them over, but the car pulled to the side of the road and it looked like the men were beginning to examine the package. So they rolled in and made the arrest. These two men were from Staten Island in New York City, so we placed them under arrest and they've been charged with conspiracy to commit a larceny by a false pretense and attempted larceny of the money and so forth. It appears that the two that we arrested were not the couriers who had come the previous couple of days, but in any event, we have placed two of them under arrest and we've charged them as I described. One of them was released on bail, and the other one is being held on higher bail. You know, this is probably a good time for me to talk about, these scams sometimes occur. This scam where somebody makes a phone call and says your relative is in jail, or another version of it is your relative has been kidnapped and it's going to cost X amount of dollars to get him out. They've been going on back since when I was a detective. I investigated similar scams back years and years ago. The easiest thing to do if you ever get one of these calls is to say, "Give me a number where I can call you back." Take the number down and then call the person they're talking about. And 99% of the time, you're going to be able to reach them and find that the whole thing was a scam. There's another iteration of this where you get a phone call and the person says I'm with the IRS and you owe back taxes, and if you don't pay them, we're going to come and arrest you. People should understand the IRS never calls you, never calls you by telephone, that's not how they operate. Another variation is the Social Security Administration where somebody claiming to be from Social Security calls and asks for cash. So people should be aware of people who call them, and the end of the story is them sending cash somehow or sending money out, that they should be very suspicious of that. In this case, we were dealing with cash, there's another variation where the people will ask you to buy, for instance, a green dot card and scratch off the back of the green dot card and read them the numbers. That allows them to make online transactions that are untraceable, so people should also be careful about any kind of instruction along those lines. I'd also warn people that sometimes you receive telephone calls from people purporting to be from police associations, firefighter associations, and veterans organizations, and those people, of course, try to pull on the hot strings of the person they're talking to, and those are also 99% of the time, quite frankly, a scam. Our police association, way back in the day, used to use a company that made phone calls on their behalf, they no longer do that. When they solicit donations, they do it strictly by letter, and I was happy to see them make that change. And they redonate most of the money they collect anyway, but they function now primarily by letter, so people shouldn't be getting calls from people saying they're from the police. So anyways, it's too bad that we didn't recover any of the money, but we did get these two into custody, and in doing so, we were able to put some information on Facebook, and now me talking here to you folks, I think the public is being educated on what to look for. Other things that are going on at the police department, and I may have mentioned this before, stop me if I get on this road, but you know that Officer Greg Shaw does a lot of work around mental illness and substance abuse, and it's not only in training our personnel but in responding to these calls, oftentimes with Norwood Fire, to people who are in distress and trying to manage those situations in the field. He's now doing a lot of follow-up, and he's been doing this for a number of months, but now with, out of his four-day rotation, we've pulled him one full day, and he's doing nothing but mental health and substance abuse follow-ups with people who have an earlier history with us, and he's been enormously helpful to these people. He's got great skills in this area, and we're just able to bump that program out a little bit more to provide follow-up services. We're currently involved in a grant offered to us by the Mass Department of Transportation, and they use NHTSA funds, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, and right now we're in the middle of our "Drive Sobber or Get Pulled Over" campaign, which uses routine traffic enforcement to target impaired drivers, drunk and drug drivers. This is, of course, a busy time of year for that. I want to say we've arrested four or five OUIs over the course of the last few days, some of them involved in crashes, and so it's just that time of year when we see real uptick. So we tell people, and you'll see something on our social media about, you know, if you're going to a party, you should Uber to the party, run the drive to the party, and then figure out how you're going to get home. To keep an eye on your friends, people should pace themselves if they're drinking, and if they're drinking, they shouldn't be driving at all with all of the rideshare opportunities that are out there, there's all sorts of ways to get yourself home. So anyway, we're doing that and we will be, and there's, you'll be about five or six cycles under this grant over the course of the next year, but "Drive Sobber or Get Pulled Over" is the one that we're in right now. I know sometimes you like to hear about overdose numbers, just to bring you up to speed, and I did talk about this last month, so far this year, we're at 18 drug overdoses with two fatalities. At this point, last year, we were at 30 total overdoses with five fatalities, so our numbers in both total overdoses and infatalsities are down. Again, something that we partner with our Norwood Fire on, of course, in our response to those calls. Major events we've been involved in over the course of the last month, of course, it being the season that it is, escorting Santa Claus, again, we're driving on a fire engine at the Norwood Town Common, having officers in place to get pedestrians in and out of Luminary Night over at the Town Common, and of course, Sunday is the light of the menorah on the Town Common, and we'll have officers there to make sure that that's safe and peaceful. I'm sure that it will be, I know it was a big hit last year. And then finally, I just mentioned that our, particularly Mr. Hajar has mentioned training in the past, that we're always training on something. The state mandates that all police officers in Massachusetts receive 40 hours of training a year. We do a lot of our training now in-house using our own instructors. This year, the topics that we're training on is statutes and resources around animal cruelty, that's a state mandate this year. Deputy Chief Kelly and Lieutenant Benedetti are handling most of that instruction, and then the better part of the day is taken up with legal update around criminal law, criminal procedure, and motor vehicle law, and that's handled largely by Officer Patrick Bishop and Lieutenant Chris Patton. When we go into January, we'll be doing training around mental health tactics, defensive tactics, and we'll be doing our night firing, which is done in our indoor range, so that's coming up next month. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, Mr. Belloni.
Going back to the topic you just started, Chief, I was on the ride here tonight and I got a call from the Social Security Department.
Ah, there you go.
And it was an auto call, so I called back and got cut off, there was no one on the other end, so unbelievable.
You're not going to get through, and it's common, but you know, it's geared around that they make 100 calls, and if they score three or four times, you know, for several thousand dollars, they can make a fair amount of money.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one thing, Chief, that on these calls, it's so frustrating, like if you try to call them back, you'll get the response when you dial the number, that the number has been disconnected. I mean, how can they do these things, you know what I mean? I mean, I realize it's technology, but geez, to say the number was disconnected when you just talked, you know, when someone just talked to you from that number, I mean, very frustrating.
Well, there are technologies out there that allow you to so-called spoof a number, have it appear, and you've maybe even seen this on a local Facebook, now with people saying, "I just got a call from somebody, it showed up as a 762 number." Having it appear, it comes from Norwood, but you know that it's not, and sometimes the people are speaking with a foreign accent, they're not even in the country, you know, but they know what the exchange is with the town, and they've spoofed the number so it appears as such.
A couple times, honestly, the ID had my number, he has the one calling me. I mean, you think I'm crazy, I'm not, well, at least not on this, but, you know, it showed my name and my number calling me, I mean, at least a couple different times.
No quality control there.
You know, I mean, you know, in one of them, the person started to talk to me, and I said, "Hey, is this Alan Howard?" And he says, "Yeah." I says, "No, it isn't, I'm Alan." I mean, you know, very frustrating, but...
They're not all good at it.
Thank you very much, Chief, and Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Hajar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thanks for the clarification. It was much appreciated. Just wanted to emphasize again on the training, thanks for bringing it up, and I think that's one of the reasons that makes Norwood different than a lot of others, is your emphasis, it makes for better patrol officers, makes for a better department, makes for better interaction with the community, so I know, I'm sure we all do, but I just want to keep saying it over and over again, I appreciate it very much, I think it's great for your team, so keep it up, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We see that every month on both the police and the fire department, we very much emphasize the training, we've always been supportive of that.
Merry Christmas. Thank you very much, you too.
Lastly, I was going to a meeting last night at 4:30, so it was roughly Quaterpass 4, I was coming from my house, went down Winslow Avenue, heading towards 1A of Washington Street, rather, and the count from me crossed the center line twice in about a 200-yard area, so I finally managed to pull up next to him at the lights at Washington Dean. Dean was as busy as I'm, texting away, and again, the other day I tried to cross the intersection, and somebody blew the red light, but they had their cellphone up here, and they're just talking away and driving with one hand. So for the benefit of the public, just go over quickly, the hands-free bill.
So the law that's been in place for a number of years now says that you can ride with your phone, you can talk on the phone, but you can't text and you can't email, you can use it for navigation, which looks just like you're dialing a number, so it's been difficult to enforce. The law passed by Governor Baker in late November now prohibits you from having the phone in your hand at all, you've got to use it hands-free. That doesn't go, a law in Massachusetts, one is passive, it does not have an emergency preamble, it doesn't go into effect for 90 days, so that law goes into effect on February 23rd. We must write nothing but warnings through the end of March for the new violation, which is making a call on your phone or using the phone in your hand. The old statute continues to apply, but the new part, we won't be able to write regular citations on until the end of March, but we'll start doing enforcement today that the law goes into effect and write warnings. You're actually going to see something coming out on Facebook now, kind of a, if you're still shopping for Christmas presents, or you should be buying your loved ones, is a mount for your car, because you can use your phone, you can touch and swipe your phone to, and you can look at the navigation, not punch it in where you're driving, but you can read the navigation on your phone, as long as it's in a mount that's connected to your console, your dashboard, or your windshield, that's right in the statute. So people who are still trying to, you know, pick up that one last gift, a mount for your car, a mount to your cellphone, so that you can look at the navigation as you drive, is an idea. People should be thinking about that, because you will not be able to hold your phone in your hand come February 23rd.
What you did not mention, when you mentioned all the different areas you can put your mount, if you got a visor mount, a speaker system that is Bluetooth, you could use that on your visor.
Yes, for the sound, yes, you could use that, yes, absolutely.
It's very inexpensive on Amazon, $20, $22.
So for people to do that, and maybe to get a mount to kind of practice with the hay series, that kind of thing, that you really can just say that, trigger your phone, and call and text whoever you want, and if people kind of practice with that and get used to doing that, it's really very, very easy to do. Get a mount for your car, experiment, play around with the Bluetooth, even while you're sitting on your couch, and get used to doing it that way, because that will be the law in February.
You can even do dictation on many of these cellphones today, so if you want to text somebody, you can just say, "What do you want to say?", and you say it, and they will send it.
That's right.
So you don't have to go anywhere near your phone.
Even when I'm not in the car, I do most of my texting and emailing by voice, it's just so much easier.
But it really irritated me yesterday, you really crossed the line into the other lane twice, this is ridiculous.
We see a lot of that.
So I can't wait for it, but thank you. Listen, to you and yours, and the entire Norwood Police Department, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, Merry Christmas, happy to hear.
Thanks, send you off.
Merry Christmas, Chief.
Good night.
Thank you.
Just shortly after 7:15, and our next appointment will be with Chief Judge Maurice of the Norwood Fire Department, giving his monthly summation of activities. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, good, how are you?
Very good, I see you have a surprise guest with you this evening.
I'm very happy to announce, and I know that town manager, Tony Mazzucco, has already announced it, but the acceptance of our new deputy chief position by Lieutenant Dave Hayes. I'll just quickly give you a little bit of background on Lieutenant Hayes, or Deputy Chief Hayes. He's a 23-year member of the Norwood Fire Department, he does have quite a bit of experience before that on other departments. He has been a lieutenant for a number of years, he's an excellent line lieutenant, I've worked with him many times over the years if I was working overtime, really knows his stuff when he's out in the field and in a fire, so I think this is a great natural progression for him to become a chief officer and now direct the younger members of the department when they're fighting fires. One of the things that, or some of the things that we had to, Deputy Chief Hayes had to go through was a civil service written examination, multiple books that he had to study, take the exam, I know that he scored very well on that written examination, and then for the first time in the history of Norwood Fire, we had an assessment center for this position. Many fire departments are going to that for chief offices, and I know the police department and the Chief Brooks also uses that type of system. The three candidates that we had for deputy chief were rigorously, over two days, asked questions and given scenarios to see how they would handle those types of situations, and I know all three candidates did well, but overall Deputy Chief Hayes did the best, and he received a ranking of number one from civil service. So I'm very happy to introduce him to you, to the board, and to the people of Norwood, Deputy Chief David Hayes.
I'm absolutely thrilled, gentlemen, been a long time here in Norwood. Was in Marshfield five years before I came to Norwood, got laid off there. Norwood picked me up, I came on, it was a great job, a great town, the Manning was just right, we can actually go in and put fires out here, or some of the other fire departments I worked at, we basically just held our own. So I decided to stay, they called me back in Marshfield, and I said, "No, I'm going to stay where I am," and that was a career decision back in 1993.
Good choice.
Yes, I think so, thank you.
Anything from the board, can you call us?
I'd just like to welcome, I guess, into the position, and congratulate Deputy Chief Hayes. I had some opportunity to work with him when we were studying and looking to upgrade the ambulance service from BLS to ALS, and he was quite involved with that down at the department, and you carry that same work attitude into your new position, will be well-served.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price, go, Mr. Belloni.
Just the same thing, Chief Hayes, congratulations to you, I know you're an excellent choice, and we look forward to working with you here for a long time, so...
As do I, thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hajar?
Just did, I just wanted to say congratulations, I'm glad you did stay with Norwood instead of Marshfield, the ALS our gain, I'm sure we enjoy your position as deputy from the Board to work with you for a while, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hajar.
Mr. Howard?
Likewise, last minute, so not much left for me, but I would like to say, you're the man that did all the work and passed all the tests heartily, and glad to have you in the position, sir, thank you.
Thank you, I hope to impress you all.
Thank you, sir, and I know you had a lot of work ahead of you to study, many books involved and everything else, it was a long process, so I congratulate you on making it out on the other side intact.
Yeah, and happy.
So in conjunction with that, with the promotion to deputy chief, I will have to now promote someone to the position of lieutenant on the department, and I just know, at this point, number one on the civil service list is Seamus Murphy, a young man that grew up in Norwood, so I will be speaking with him shortly, making arrangements to move him up to the position of lieutenant. Other business going on at the fire department, we've had a few small fires recently at the department, we had a garage fire which was determined to be electrical in nature, we had a small fixture fire at one of the local nursing homes, we actually had a second issue with the same exact fixture a few weeks later, so we did put the nursing home in touch with the local wiring inspector, Mr. Sullivan, who referred them to the Norwood Light Department, and what's going to happen is this nursing home is going to take advantage of one of the rebate programs that Norwood Light offers, and this rebate program is going to allow them to install LED, new LED light fixtures in the nursing home, and it will save them thousands of dollars on their electricity bill and also provide nice new safe fixtures for the nursing home, so that was kind of a win-win in a situation that hopefully wasn't going to be a problem down the road. I'm sure you're aware there was a very serious pedestrian accident down on Deerfield and Wedgewood, Norwood Fire Department and Norwood Police were both involved in that, our paramedics did work on the individual to determine that she had very serious injuries, to the extent that we had to use MedFlight to MedFlight the person into a Boston-area hospital, but always good to have those paramedics and advanced life support skills available, and then to make those decisions and transport the individual to Boston. We recently had a mutually fire to Dedham, that this past Sunday, they had a house fire, and we provided station coverage to them. We, last week, we had a serious motor vehicle accident on 95 Southbound, no major injuries at the accident, but there was a rolled-over vehicle in the ravine between the northbound and the southbound sides of the highway. Our Engine 4 crew did stay on scene and block a portion of the highway, while the tow truck company basically had a crane come in and remove the vehicle back onto the highway. There was no issues with hazardous materials, gasoline leaking, so our crew cleared from that. Speaking of training, we completed our paramedic advanced support refresher class, so the series of individuals that needed to have their paramedic licenses renewed just completed that, and advanced life support coordinator Mike Downing and basic life support Mike Chisholm will make sure that those individuals get their licenses, so they'll be able to perform those excellent duties for us in the next few years. You may have seen Apparatus yesterday on Pleasant Street, there was a chimney fire, took a little work to get the situation under control, not necessarily because of the actual fire, but because what was clogged up inside the chimney. We do have chain devices with some springs on it, where we lower this device into the chimney and basically have to loosen up the blockage.
Creosote buildup, so to speak.
It is, and actually, that was something I was going to touch upon, Mr. Chairman, was that the main cause of chimney fires is creosote buildup. We recommend that chimneys be cleaned once a year by a licensed chimney sweep, and if you're going to be burning in your chimney, you should be burning only seasoned wood, it should be hardwood, such as oak and maple, should not be burning pine, which has obviously the sap material in it, which, when burned, causes the creosote buildup in the liner of the chimney. So with that, I will answer any questions that the board has.
Before I turn it over to my colleagues, one quick question, you talked about a nursing home incident, electrical fire in nature?
Yes.
I imagine you do, but do you have a master plan for an evacuation if needed?
We do, the fire department is prepared for that, and actually, I've done some work with Assistant Town Manager Bernie Cooper on that, where there's actually a system in place where if we have to evacuate a nursing home, there's an actual, basically framework that's been built, that the nursing home would contact this group of people, and what they do is they ascertain how many individuals need to be evacuated from the nursing home, what their needs are, and then they have a plan, and they contact outskirts nursing homes, where they say, "We have these individuals," and then these people are now transported to those facilities, where they're taken care of on a temporary basis. So it could be, someone's in the nursing home strictly because they're elderly, or they could be on a ventilator, so we have to find the appropriate nursing home for that individual, and this system addresses that.
Very good, it's good to know, I think it's good to know the people who have loved ones in nursing homes, it's good information, so thank you for that. Questions to the board, Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Howard.
Just want to say, on the training, that's done in-house, is it, with trainers that we have?
It is, we actually, we could use an outside individual, but we have an excellent firefighter who has all the credentials we needed, his name is Alex Rose, he came to us from the Lexington Fire Department, and all the feedback that I've received on him is that he is an outstanding teacher, so we use him quite a bit for whether it's just monthly training or refresher training such as this.
Do you have an ALS trainer as well?
He does the ALS.
He does ALS too?
Correct.
That's wonderful.
Yes.
It's going to save you dough too, I mean, absolutely, and people might have to go out to get the training too, so that's all good for us.
We try to provide it in-house, it makes it easier on the firefighters instead of having to travel to other departments.
And I know we were discussing previously about doing it, so to speak, off-shift, so that they can be dedicated to the training at the time.
Correct.
Which I fully support.
And other than actual EMS training, we also hope to be increasing our firefighter training, which is one of the main reasons that we went after a second deputy chief's position, so I know that Deputy Chief Hayes will be excellent at that, and then also, when the current deputy chief, Ronnie Maggio, retires in May, the next individual, I think we'll have two really good candidates in there to enhance and improve the training in the department.
One last thing, I'm sorry to take up your time, Mr. Chairman. What was I going to say? Oh, with three people out injured at the present time...
Correct.
Don't want to get into that, but I would say this, do we need more training for firefighter safety to protect our firefighters from injury? Just a thought, I mean, you don't have to...
No, I completely agree.
Just from a layperson.
I think that's something we should address, we've had it in the past, I think if you look at biomechanics and how people move and how to lift correctly, I think I've mentioned before, we have taken steps to try to eliminate... before, we have taken steps to try to eliminate issues where we're lifting all the time. I know Chief Greeley was a big proponent of the striker-stretcher system, which is fully automatic.
But that's only from the ground to the vehicle.
It is.
I mean, if you're in a tenement with a narrow stairway, it's horrendous.
That's correct, as we spoke about at the last meeting.
Sure, sure. I just, I mean, I have a little professional ability being forty years of work as comp specialist, so, you know, I know in the injury game, but a little bit. But I just throw that out. Do we need more training, you know, possibly to protect the men and women?
I think that's definitely something we can take a look at and move forward with.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Hajar?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, good evening.
Good evening.
Great report. I appreciate all the numbers and putting it in context to previous years. It's great. You know I appreciate the training numbers, and I look forward to having even a more focused effort when you have your second deputy, so we can try to do comparisons year-over-year to see what types of training you do need to focus on and exactly what you're doing and then comparing it. So I thank you for that. Just one question on the report.
Yes.
Under permits, did we re-categorize the flammable fluid because there's none for this year compared to the two previous years? Are you re-categorizing into something else, some other row?
I don't believe so, but I could ask Lieutenant John Cody and find the answer out about that.
Okay.
I don't know as to why we would have reclassified that at all. I know that it's categorized different tank-type structures, but I can look into it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
I'll say nothing.
Saying nothing. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to both of you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Happy holidays.
Congratulations, Steve.
Looking forward to it.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
That concludes our appointments for the evening, so we will get right into new business. Number one, Mark Good, town of Norwood treasurer and tax collector submitting our approval of board. A note issued in the amount of thirteen million dollars for the Forbes Hill property.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Move the board authorized the borrowing to Oppenheimer and Company, Inc., for a net cost of one point eight six, six percent, with the notes to mature in December seventeen, twenty twenty.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Number two, Lick, Norwood Board of Selectmen submitting for the board's approval attesting that each liquor license has been renewed for twenty twenty. All establishments have been inspected by the fire department as well as the billing department. Signed, certificates have been forwarded to this office, and liquor liability and workman's comp insurance is on file with the town of Norwood. Information?
So moved?
Send it approval?
Motion to approve?
Says needs approval.
Motion to approve. You're right. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, did someone second? If not, I will.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Number three, Sonia Ramos, general manager of Jake &amp; Joe's located at four seventy-five Boston Providence Turnpike, submitting request for extension of hours until two AM on Sunday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty, to show a Las Vegas UFC event that starts Saturday the eighteenth, twenty twenty, and could continue past regular closing time due to the time difference. This is on the West Coast. The back gate will remain closed, and they will have a police detail. If the match, for some reason, is canceled or the event is over during normal business hours, the late closing will be rescinded. We've done this in the past.
Motion to approve? Second?
I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Number five, Lisa Drummy, Meals on Wheels program director, submitting request to place an insert in the January twenty twenty electric bills.
Motion to approve? Second?
I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Mr. Val Sweeney, Norwood Irish Music Club submitting request for a special one-day AAB license for an event being held on Saturday, December twenty-first, from six PM until eleven PM at the KFC Knights of Columbus Hall on Nickel Street.
Motion to approve? Second?
Motion to approve and a second, and I think even a third on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? On our late agenda, the Norwood Portuguese Club is looking for a beer and wine license, a wine and malt beverage license only, for the thirty-first of December from twelve PM until twelve AM.
Approve?
Second?
I have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Under memoranda, John W. Parsons Esquire Executive Director of Perek submitting notification that the town of Norwood's required appropriation for the retirement system for fiscal twenty twenty-one, which commences July first, twenty twenty, is five million four seventy-one two ten. Information?
File.
Have a second on that?
On the motion?
On the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mazuko, I think that represents a roughly two percent, four percent increase over the current year appropriations, is that right?
Correct. It's about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars or so.
And are we, aren't we looking forward to a day about nine years hence when our annual contribution to the retirement fund declines dramatically? Is that...
Correct. We're scheduled to be fully funded by twenty twenty-nine. The Commonwealth has a schedule, a funding schedule, for all communities to be funded by a certain date. It has gotten pushed out based on where the market is, so we're hopeful to make that date in twenty twenty-nine. What we may look at in the next few years, if resources allow, is we've done pension catch-ups in the FAST, which will help us either get to that date faster, or we know we're going to get beyond that full funding number to be able to absorb a market impact that would knock us back down. But we're currently at about eighty-two percent funded, which is among the top quarter in the Commonwealth, so we're in a good place.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
Just to follow up on my colleague Maloney, and Bill, we were talking about earlier, I know we're voting on five four seven one two ten, but the actual number that town meeting is going to approve is going to be five two six six one eighty-three, because the Housing Authority has their own budget number.
Correct.
That they will prove, so it isn't as large of an increase. I mean, you know, it is, but thirty-six thousand...
It's the same every year.
Thirty-six thousand is really not part of our town budget obligation. It's the Housing Authority, so.
Thank you for that.
So that we're clear.
Thank you. Anything else on that?
Let's see, when you need to, it's a motion to file, right?
Yes.
Information, yeah.
Yes, information. Can I have a second on that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? That brings us to the managers' update. Mr. Mazuko?
Couple of quick items, Mr. Chairman. First, I attended the student council's talent show they held last night at high school. It was a great show. There was a lot of talent. I enjoyed it. I'd encourage next year if they do it again, if you have a chance to attend. I was invited to speak at the Norwood Retired Men's Club last week, and I want to just extend an appreciation and a thanks to them for inviting me to speak and for their hospitality. The planning department, in conjunction with the rec departments, received a five thousand dollar grant for an ADA accessible swing set at one of our parks, the exact location to be determined. But I know Travis and Patrick of the planning department worked on that, so they'll be receiving about a five thousand dollar grant from the state to install sometime this spring a wheelchair-compliance swing set.
Excellent.
And last but not least, we received our certificate of occupancy for the new Norwood Light headquarters on Access Road. The project is substantially complete. They'll be working on punch list items for the next couple of weeks. It's come in on time and, more importantly, on budget. We'll have equipment in there shortly. We're already starting to store some equipment there now that we have a CBO, and the staff turnover is expected to be, or the staff transition, we're anticipating moving furniture coming in in the next week or so, and probably Martin Luther King weekend is when we're going to do the official cut over. We've got to make sure the phone system and the IT systems are ready to go for the cut over and that we don't interrupt the billing operation. So we're looking forward to that, and then we should have staff in there fully operating in the middle of January. We'll probably do a ribbon cutting at some point in January, but given the weather, it'll be just sort of a quick formality, and then we'll do a more formal open house for the public sometime in March or April, once the weather's, once they've had a little time to sort of kick the tires on the building and once the weather improves a little bit.
Mr. Plasko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could follow up a couple of comments on that. I think if the board hasn't had the opportunity yet, when you do have an opportunity to go through the building, you're going to be pleased that it was a project that's going to serve the light department and the community for a long time. It's the clerk of the works and the GC for, as representatives, did an excellent job in managing that through a couple of rough points in the design, but worked everything out and delivered it on times. The manager points out end budget, and I think everyone's going to be really, really thrilled with the results, and this building is going to serve the department well for many, many years.
Thank you for that, sir. Anything else, Mr. Mazuko?
That is all, sir.
Okay, that brings us to anything from the board? Mr. Hajar?
Sure. A couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Just want to mention that there was the wonderful Christmas holiday event last week at the Norwood Theater. I want to congratulate Judith Howard for leading a very good team that organized this in what I hope will be an annual event. But they did a great job, was basically sold out, was well-received, well-coordinated, so congratulations to all that participated as well, those who put the time and effort into organizing it. Last week, I was honored to be a Tony Awards judge for individuals at the high school level, grades eleven and twelve, that submitted their applications. We have a lot of talented young individuals. We have thirty-four submissions. We can only award ten. A lot of them have some really great, you know, things that they have competed with, whether it was music or activities and helping others, because it's mostly about community service. So we have a lot of individuals that like to give back to the community, and I appreciate it, and going through that was a help to me. Couple highlights from the Beacon. There has been agreement on the use of surplus funds from last fiscal year at the state level. Means more road money, not as much as we were hoping, but it's still additional money that will come to us later on that we can use in next year's funding of road construction. But there was full funding of the special education circuit breaker program, which I know is important for the schools. It helps us as far as the having to dip into the override fund if they start to go over, so that was really good news. And very importantly, the Senate and the House have agreed on a new financing bill for the state's Chapter Seventy. The Student Opportunity Act provides one point four billion dollars of additional funding over the next seven years, and we'll see how Norwood feels, feels, but it should be good with regards to the new formula that they're going to be using. Last night, I happily attended, along with many others, including my wife, a film produced by Jerry Kelleher on the life and times of a former selectman, state legislator, state senator, lieutenant governor and governor Frank G. Allen, who took Norwood under his wing with regards to a lot of things that went on for the town. It was great. Jerry did a wonderful job in producing it, and it's going to come out, just like he's done some others with regards to the old Raceway, and it'll be on CD. So my congratulations to Jerry. Did a great job. And lastly, just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, be safe, and also Happy Hanukkah, which is coming up as well to our Jewish friends. So really, just be safe, because we're not going to be here next couple of weeks, so enjoy yourselves. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Plasko?
I just want to congratulate Mr. Hajar on surviving the Tony job of being a judge. I've done that in the past, and it's pretty tough. They're all very worthy, very difficult to try to choose ten between them. I know it's usually a panel, but you say, you don't have to do it alone, but it's a lot of hard work reading through those applications and really being able to make a decision. So they're all worthy, and congratulations to the Tony winners. When are they going to be announced?
In January.
Anyway. And I also just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and any other special time a year for all of us, or any other beliefs that you have or holidays that you celebrate. I wish everyone the best this time of year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Likewise, I've been a Tony judge previously, and as Mr. Plasko said, that I would add to it that, that at times people say that our school system isn't that great, but when you see the credentials of these young people that are trying for a Tony Award, one after another, after another, after another, I mean, these are amazing kids that we have up at our high school, all of these young people, and they're a credit to our town. They really are. And I would challenge anyone to say anything negative about our system, because they say, well, on test scores, we got this or that. But every year, we have hundreds and hundreds of kids that are, that are accepted in colleges all over the country, some of them the best colleges in the country, and Norwood kids are all, hundreds of them every year go to these. So just my comment on that. So to be quick, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah to all my friends. And I would say, please join us on the twenty-second, this Sunday, for the lighting of the first Hanukkah candle down on the Norwood Carmen. And that should be a lot of fun. Last year, there were well over a hundred people there that enjoyed it with the beautiful songs and things that they sang down there. It was a lot of fun. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Manager, there will be no more leafbag pickup, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if you want to get rid of your leafbags, if you still have them, each Saturday with the designated hours up on Winter Street, you could drop them off in your SUV or your pickup truck like I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to the Norwood seventh and eighth grade cheerleading team. We announced that they were heading to Florida. A couple of weeks ago, we announced they're heading to Florida for competition. They did. They competed. They won a couple of rounds and overall finished fifth out of over a hundred and twenty cheerleading teams in their category. So that's a great, a great, a great moment, and congratulations in particular to cheer coordinator Stacy Clark and her team of coaches. Job well done. Happy, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all. We'll see you all in twenty twenty. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Again, I want to touch on the menorah lighting, which is scheduled for this Saturday at five PM. It begins the first of eight days of Hanukkah, the Jewish holiday. Last year, we had, I think the very first time, we had the congregation come over from Canton. Many Norwood people belong to that congregation led by Rabbi Horowitz, and we lit the menorah. I'm asking everybody if they can find in their heart to come out and show our diversity, show our unity, and support our Jewish brethren here in Norwood. So if you have nothing else to do and you can make it, please try to make that lighting at five PM this coming Sunday. It'll be, it's a good way to show that we care about our community, no matter what religion you are, no matter what color you are, how you vote. It's a matter of unity in the community. And we show that every day with the groups like the Circle of Hope, the Friends of St. Nick's. So let's do it one more time for the Jewish community here in Norwood. With that said, this has been some time in the making. I was appointed to the Norwood Police Department on January fifth, nineteen seventy-one, and I served until March thirty-first, two thousand and ten, which time I was medically retired. I stayed out a year, and the thing I noticed over that course of the year, I really missed the interaction with the public and the citizens. So I ran for selectman, and in April of two thousand and eleven, Mr. Howard and myself were both elected to this board. And we've served for nine years. Mr. Howard's already given his announcement that he will not be seeking reelection, and I want to stipulate to everybody out there that I also will not be looking for a reelection. I will not be on the ballot. The papers, the nomination papers come out January second. They will be available for anyone who may be interested in taking an elected position here in the town of Norwood. But again, I will not be a candidate this coming term. So I've completed three, and it's my choice now not to go on for another four. And with that said, we meet again on January seventh. We have a hiatus. Next week is Christmas Eve. The following one is New Year's Eve, and we'll be back on January seventh before you again. And my colleague, Mr. Howard and myself, will roughly have three months, but I can commit to you now that we will work as hard as we can over the next three months to continue to make this the best time in the Commonwealth. And I thank you all. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. And for those that celebrate Kwanzaa, which starts on December twenty-sixth and runs until January first, I wish you, all my African-American sisters and brothers, a very happy Kwanzaa if you choose to celebrate that. And there is a similarity, if I can just say this quickly, between the menorah and the Kwanzaa celebration. The menorah is a candle altar, and they light lights for eight nights. The African-American community also has a, what they call a kanara, and that consists of seven candles, so it's very similar to the Jewish celebration. So with that said... said, I wish you all a very happy holiday. Thank you all.
Motion to adjourn? Second?
I have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.